Good afternoon, we're gonna call Prattville Planting Commission to order. I'm Secretary with your car roll please.
Mayor Gillespie, Councilman Whiteside, Chairman Smith, Vice Chair Gardner, Chief Johnson, Carpenter, Hyman, Mr. McAllie, and Mr. Nelson.
Second, in discussion? All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed like sign. Thank you. Motion carried. We don't have any old business, and the new business is a preliminary plat, Midtown Oak, plat two, location George Drive and Sunset Drive, owned as Goodwin Building Company, represented by Goodwin Mills in Kew. This is a public hearing. Is it anybody out there to speak for or against the public hearing? Yes ma'am, if you will, please come up and sign in. And if there anyone else to come up and speak for or against, please come and sign in. No. How you doing ma'am? If you will, please state your name and your address.
Okay, my name is Judy Lynn Rigby at 222 Lee Drive. I'm at the corner where all the action took place every time they-
Is your mic on?
Huh?
Turn your mic on, somebody can-
Oh, I don't- Oh, how about that?
You gotta look closer to-
Is that okay? Okay, the name is Judy Lynn Rigby, 222 Lee Drive. It's at the corner where all the action is going into, you know, where they mow down all the clear cutting and everything. And I believe you all have a copy of my letter that I brought by the commission. I have major concerns, I'm just gonna have to write them, I can't repeat them all right now, I need to sit down and write. I write better than I speak. It was like living in a war zone. I mean, your flatbed comes in, you know, unloading the, you know, the dirt movers and all that, and I guess the thing that concerns me is that history repeats itself, and you have all the construction trucks going in and out. Well, right at the end is the end of the sewer line, and you know, they made a hole, I mean, traveling back and forth, they made a hole big enough for a three-year-old, you know, to fall into. And they didn't stop, they just threw the little yellow bucket out there and kept on going. It took me two days, you know, get the police, the police has to get this other kind of police, and then they have to call a construction company to, you know, I run out there and put, covered up the hole because I didn't want kids or animals to fall down into it. And it's been something, it's nerve-wracking for me if somebody is gonna get hurt. And I do have pictures, I don't have them with me, I've got to go through all my pictures. I took pictures from the start, from the very beginning. And the ironic thing was that, once we got the right policeman, he says, "I can't go on private property." And we got a construction person to drive a machine down there to cover up this hole, you know, it's right by the, okay, the end of the sewer line. And the guy drove, I guess it's a dirt presser, I don't know anyway, he drove it down there. And he didn't cover up the hole, he just straddled it. So I still had to go out there and cover it up that night. It's just, you know, animals, wild animals, I mean, animals were not transported to another part. Walthall says, "Well, they'll just run," you know. And you go out there in the morning, and it's, you know, a mother raccoon, you know, that had two nursing babies, I don't, you know, and she died coming, you know, trying to get to my house. And it's, unbalance is nature. The winds, and the, I guess what disappoints me more, the most thing is you didn't put, somebody did not put a protective shield around the perimeter. You know, designed some wind blockers, you know, to stop what happened later, which was the flood, you know. And windbreakers and fences. I had only had nice snakes, okay, nonviolent ones, you know. I had a black one with yellow stripes, that's a kingsnake. But after all this, you know, a rattler come down next door, and ladies, you know, child nearly stepped on it. And so, you know, I go to sleep every night now, wondering if a rattler is gonna be in bed with me. It is highly nerve-wracking. And they could have put up fences, there are fences snakes cannot climb over, at least tried to reduce the number of crisis, potential crisis. I was, excuse me, I have a degree from Torian University, I was a project leader at one time, and when we developed software, we estimated all the different possibilities that would happen, you know, to counteract those when you wrote your software. And it's like they, it's like everything was short-sighted, it was like, go in, plow it down, and you know, I felt like one of those little animals, run for your life, run for your life. And, you know, you deal with that a year. Then also exhaust from diesel engines is a known cancer carcinogen. And, you know, you've got that circle in your house every day. And I was disappointed that, you know, that, like I said, that the people and the taxpayers, that we didn't have some blockage put up there. A guy next, across the street from me, his entire tree, because they didn't do their job right to begin with, and everything flooded, is that, you know, the tree just, excuse me, the tree just fell over. The whole thing, it covered this whole lot, roots and all.
Yes ma'am.
Uh huh, anyway.
All right, Mr. Duke, you take note of this, with everything being said?
Oh yeah, I can, you know, I'm right, you know, I write better than I speak, so, you know, I can write up details. I do wanna know who does JB Construction get his instructions from?
Well, what I suggest you do ma'am, is to write down all the information, if you will, and give it to Mr. Duke behind you in the planning department.
Oh, okay, I've met him, I've met him before, and I have his card, yes.
If you do that, and then perhaps everyone can take a look at it, and for the builders, for all the builders that are doing work out there, the owner of the property probably be notified through his office of all the things that are probably not correctly done, based on the information that you provide with him. Hold your point one minute. Let the, let it be known that our chairman is now, is for the planning commission, is present. Thank you.
Okay, write everything up and give it to Mr. Duke.
Yes, if you will, and what he'll do is make a copy of it, and he will give it to us as planning commission, and we'll take that and look at it and evaluate it and try to make things correct, all that possible, if you would do that.
Yes, I guess, you know, I'm a protector by nature. I, I had, you know, enough money had never been allocated for the felines and the shelter, okay, so I had my own shelter built, you know, behind there. And I've been taking care, you know, I don't now, because I got to take care of me, and I don't have them, anyway, I don't have the money for, I don't have the money for cleanup, y'all, they're looking at, you know, I got one quarter thousand dollars on my property, you know, because, see, the trees are been over from Walthall's side, and there's some on my side, you know, after the storm came. And the storm came and found that vacant, you know. Anyway, I'll write down everything. I am concerned about several things, okay?
Yes ma'am.
I understand that a water line is gonna be put all the way down the back, it'll be behind us, I guess.
Yes ma'am, well-
Just write it up.
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am, write everything up that you think in the, and once he get that to us, then we can take that and look at it and try to make the right thing and the best thing happen for your property, that's within legal bounds.
Yeah, sure.
Yes ma'am?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thanks y'all for listening, and I'm sorry I'm not experienced at this.
I'm sorry.
But I write well, I assure you.
Done a great job ma'am.
Thank you ma'am.
Is it anyone else to speak for or against? If not, we close the public hearing. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Attorney. Mr. Duke, you wanna speak, or you?
Or did you want to speak for or against this issue? Oh, absolutely, come on up and talk to us. I apologize for being a little late. Got busy at the office and couldn't get away.
I didn't know if Mr. Duke needed to go before me or not.
Nah, you go right ahead. He'll, he'll talk to us afterwards.
Yes sir. Sandra Campbell with Goodwin Mills in Kew, presenting this plat two for Goodwin Building.
Yes sir.
And we're requesting a- It may just be low.
Thank you sir.
Feeling better?
Yes.
Maybe I hold it so, had to bend over. And we're requesting that the planning commission approve a preliminary plat for this project. We're looking at extending George Drive, as was stated earlier, to make the loop from Midtown Plat One into the existing subdivision. And I'll answer any questions that the commission may have.
Is that this one? What has been built so far? I have not been over there lately.
Can I come, can I come up and show you?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. This is plat one.
Okay.
And there was one section.
Yes sir.
And there's an extension to George Drive.
Okay.
And it came to here.
Right. Okay.
Plat two is to pick up where plat one stopped.
Okay.
Bring Sunset Drive and tie it into the existing street, the existing street's called right there.
Got it.
So at that point, we will have a connection.
All the way to-
On the street, all the way back over to Lee Drive.
Got it.
And that's, that's pretty much what we're requesting at this point.
That portion of the street in, so we can make that connection. Excellent, excellent.
Just a matter of interest, how many, how many houses do you have built on George Drive so far?
So far?
I'm just curious, I don't, not, not a point, but-
Fifteen houses? Okay, thank you.
Curious, yeah.
All right, are there any questions for the presenter? Any other questions? Thank you sir.
Yes sir.
Excellent. Ms. Duke, do you have anything you wanna add? We've closed it. Yes sir.
I'm sure if you wanted it now, this discussion now, or after you close the public hearing, but either way-
Okay, I think he closed the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, he closed the public.
Just talking to Ms. Rigby and-
And then passed it over to me.
Missed that, I apologize.
That's okay.
In your packet, there should be a copy-
I guess we can read it in also, if we need to.
Yeah, yeah. No, we gotta read, you're right, we gotta read it.
We gotta read it in. Can you read it down for me, Mr.? I'll see where it is.
I got it.
All right, go right ahead.
Resolution preliminary plat, Midtown Oak subdivision plat two, October 20th, 2016. Whereas Goodwin Building Company is the developer of Midtown Oak subdivision plat two, and whereas the developed, the proposed development is located inside the city limits on Sunset Drive, at the end of George Drive, and whereas a sketch plan of the proposed development was approved on May 15, 2014, and whereas the public hearing for the proposed subdivision was heard on October 20th, 2016, and whereas the required city departments have reviewed and commented on the proposed development, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby approves the submitted preliminary plat of Midtown Oak subdivision plat two, so moved. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Your second. All right, thank you sir. Now, Mr. Duke, since we heard the presenter already, so we go on with-
As Mr. Campbell has talked about, you have a second phase of this, this overall subdivision that was approved back in 2014. This current plat is 20 lots, and includes a connection of Sunset Drive to, connection of George Drive to Sunset Drive, which achieves a long sought connection to this cut-off neighborhood. Long as I've been here, we've talked about the fact that you, you have essentially the schools off of Patrick Street in Honeysuckle, that there's only one way in and out. While not necessarily the way we would design it today, I have to be honest with you, if we were looking to access this much traffic, we would not lay these streets out a lot differently. But we're essentially connecting on to the, to an existing pattern, you know, is, is the, if you recall, this overall sketch plan is a part of the larger property owned by the Walthalls, or Walthall family, and that stretches further to the south toward Doster Road. As we see that piece develop over time, there will be other pathways that pick up here and go further south. So we, we have the ability to create a better pattern, but not in the short run. In the short run, we're really achieving a secondary connection to this, this cut-off neighborhood. Paul, and I apologize, I may not have heard it, but Mr. Campbell may have said that there will be in another plat, will be a connection to Honeysuckle Drive. This, see, Honeysuckle is on this plat, and stubbed out, and then it'll eventually extend further up and connect to the existing, close to the intermediate school. As far as this plat is concerned, it has been reviewed, and you have a copy of the comment letter in your packet. It looks like a great deal of problems or issues. What we have here are just things that need to be corrected. Just, overall, the plat itself is where it's supposed to be, as far as road layout, the lots match the sketch. We have some minor issues missing in easement here, inlet that needs to be in a certain place. Those items will have to be corrected before they can be released to, to go to construction. You have ordinarily approved that contingent, that is certainly your, your discretion. You do not have to do that, but we would certainly be okay with that if you approved a contingent upon those items being worked out. Glad to answer any questions. I will also say, just to kind of address the comments that were made in the public hearing, that we did have some, some difficulty with erosion control on this site. Excuse me, we, city did not, the developer had some challenges that I believe they have taken care of, we have stayed after them to deal with that. Most of the drainage, I'm just looking up at this plat, it, most of the drainage takes place on the, or moves toward the northeast corner of the lot, excuse me, the southeast corner, northeast corner of the lot. And that is probably one of the last areas that they plan to develop. But this, this phase that they're in, what we're insisting that they do is they put the inlets in to catch that drainage and bring it back into the, into the organized system. Or it was just kind of free-flowing in places that it had not gone, creating some issues with volume of water, but with the sediment that was being carried in that water. We, we have not seen an issue with that, even though it hasn't rained in the last couple of months, weeks, I can't, can't remember, but when it was still raining, we had pretty much arrested those problems. So I, I think, I think they may have learned some lessons about that site, and we stayed on top of it, so. Glad to answer any questions. It, it should get measurably better even than it is now with this development. Drainage will have a place, permanent direction with inlets that are installed to catch it, send it back into the organized system, so. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? We need, any discussion? All right, yes sir. Yes sir.
Where Mr. Duke's right.
Yes.
Most of the flow does come to this area, and as we stated, the plan is, we're gonna put an inlet in that area to catch the water, take it back down to the south, to intercept it, to keep it from going to the property.
Need to speak into mic, so we can get that recorded, please.
Yes, yes, that will be going in right now.
Along with this plat?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And there's one, one comment to ask about, and that may be department, Joe, I'm not sure, the temporary turnarounds, is that a gravel turnaround, or what is that, what is that little like? Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. We have a motion to go forward with the conditions that Mr. Duke, or can I have a motion? I can't make the motion, will somebody make the motion?
I move we amend to stipulate that conditions in planning, conditions planning lays forth be met, and add that to the, add that to the resolution.
All right, now the second. Can I get a second? Oh, thank you. All right, all in favor of the amended resolution? Or do we have to? Okay, all in favor of the amended resolution, signify by raising your right hand. Right. Now. Now, all in favor of the amended resolution, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign, and like sign on the other, carried. All right, that, that has carried, thank you sir. All right. Now, number two is a, is also a public hearing, and it is, appears to be budget car sales, or the old Gilmore Ford. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this matter? This is a public hearing. Will, will the presenter come and speak for or against it? And then we will close the public hearing after you tell us, and maybe somebody wanna ask a question.
I'm James Monk with Alabama Land Surveyors.
Yes sir.
Here requesting approval of a preliminary final plat.
Okay.
It sounds like it is.
Yes, that's all. Okay.
Can you hear me okay, sir?
All right.
Jamie, I'll just hold her, I'll be in my office.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, James.
All right, yeah, again, I'm James Monk with Alabama Land Surveyors, here requesting a preliminary and final plat approval for a subdivision of unplatted properties at the intersection of Cobb's Ford and McQueen Smith.
Okay.
If you are unfamiliar with the property, it's currently a budget car sales, that's, used to be Earl B. Wise Realty. It's in a small mobile trailer directly across from the entrance, it'd be the western entrance to Walmart. They're going to remove that and build a new facility.
Okay. All right. Any questions for this one? All right, this was a public hearing, if there's anybody to speak for or against, or any questions, signify, come forward and register. All right, the public hearing is hereby closed. Ms. Carpenter, can you read in the matter?
Resolution preliminary plat, budget car sales plat one, October 20th, 2016. Whereas Gilmore LLC is the owner of budget car sales plat one, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits at 508 McQueen Smith Road, and whereas a public hearing for the proposed subdivision was heard on October 20th, 2016. And whereas the city department heads, whereas the required city departments have reviewed and commented on the proposed development, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby approves the submitted preliminary plat of budget car sales plat one, so moved.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Duke, do you have anything you wanna tell us about this?
Sir, I'll, I'll just kinda echo what Mr. Monk said about the, the site. This is essentially taking a piece that was a, previously a, a lot of record, and then taking a portion of another lot, case into it, and, and adding those together. The only thing that we, we requested is, or two things that they need to show, an access easement, which is, Jim Monk just told me he was able to locate that, and, and will add that to the plat, that on the, on the southern line, that is a, an access easement which we suspected was there, and actually is in, in place, and then also the, there's a piece that will be left over, once this is created, and that needs to be a part of the plat. So those two items will be added to the final plat, and that will satisfy our requirements. There are no need for, for utilities to be installed, those will all be handled with the development of the site, and they are currently adjacent to the site, so. Glad to answer any questions, this is pretty straightforward.
Any questions? I have a question though, what side acreage is that? What's your lot size? And do you, do you have culvert in there to contain your, your water flow when you get, for your runoff? Do you have concrete, you using concrete, asphalt, and do you have a way to control the water once you get, good side of rain?
Yeah, currently the site is about 90% grass, currently. I have not seen the design plans. We're in the stages of just getting the property divided out so it can be sold to budget car sales. Currently Gilmore LLC still owns the property, and is making this, this plat for them to move forward with their design plans. But I mean, there are, it's pretty relatively flat. There are some, some great inlets in that area, how they would make that tie-in, you know, I'm not sure. But there's certainly storm drainage in that area.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions?
I just wanted to make sure Mr. Gardner's question was answered. As we said, we're at the, dividing the property, this will be like an individual site, so when budget car sales presents their development plan for that site, they'll have to address stormwater detention, or at least show us why they don't have to do that based on it being an existic site. There is a fairly large drainage system that, that runs through the Gilmore property, the overall Gilmore site, and this, this would tie to that, that eventually comes down in, in daylights again, behind courtesy cleaners, between courtesy cleaners and Dollar General along McQueen Smith Road, so.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Any other questions? All right, and go ahead and vote on them. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, like sign? All right, motion carries, same carries, all the way. Looks like we do have a final plat, which is the same. Read that in for me. Read that in for me. Resolution final plat, budget car sales part one, plat one, October 20th, 2016. Whereas Gilmore LLC is the owner of budget car sale plat one and whereas proposed development is located inside the city limits at 508 McQueen Smith Road and whereas a preliminary plat for the proposed subdivision was approved on October 20, 2016 and whereas the required city department has reviewed and commented on the proposed development, now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission have approved the submitted final plat of budget car sale plat one. I so moved, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, light sign, okay. Mr. Duke, do you have any miscellaneous items you wish to discuss with us at this time?
That's what I do.
Yes sir.
With the packet that was sent out, I included a memorandum addressing changes to Article Three of the zoning ordinance, you may or may not have had an opportunity to review that, I'm sorry, it was quite a bit of information. In that, with that memorandum, I included a copy of Title 11, excuse me, Section 115280 of the state code as well as the current Article Three of the zoning ordinance and proposed amendments. Article Three of our zoning ordinance deals with the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Board of Zoning Adjustments, you'll recall, is set up under state code as, as kind of a relief valve to the zoning ordinance and probably the best way I've noted to drive it is, is if you did not have a Board of Adjustment, then you would risk having your zoning ordinance challenged and possibly invalidated because there was no potential for relief, because there's no way that you can anticipate everything that will come up when you start regulating property. There are situations that we do not know about even today that will come up on, on lots that need some kind of individual examination. The reason for the, the proposed change is that you can see that we have basically two clauses in our, our current ordinance, it's attachment B to that section. Only, only one of those clauses deals with the actual workings of the board, the other just sets a fee. What our, our current ordinance does is refers back to state code and says, set up your board the way it's called for under state code. It doesn't provide any local direction to that board about how they're to administer the zoning ordinance. The board deals with appeals of administrative actions, meaning that if I as a zoning administrator make a decision, interpretation of the code that they do, that the applicant doesn't agree with, they have the ability to appeal that to the board, basically explain why my interpretation is incorrect. Rarely see it, but that also extends to enforcement of the code, if somebody is basically determined to be in violation, they have the ability to appeal that violation notice to the Board of, Board of Adjustment. I can't say that I've ever seen that, but that is a route that can be taken. Majority of what the board does though is deals with uses on appeal, those are uses that are set up in a certain district by legislative action, by recommendation of the planning commission and adoption by the city council, as uses that are allowed in a district, but they need some special examination. Best one I know is, to tell you is a church, is usually allowed in a residential area, but churches don't always work necessarily at the, at the end of a, of a cul-de-sac. You know, you want like a church to have better access, separation from a residential lot, so they're allowed in, in our district, but they need some kind of special examination on case by case basis. The other item that the board deals with almost monthly is a request for a variance, that's where someone feels that they have some kind of hardship where they need a relief from the requirements of the, of the zoning ordinance. What is lacking in our, in our current code is some way to, for that, that board to understand what they should do locally, what are the boundaries that they should be making decisions within, and this amendment that we're proposing provides some of that. The, the other item it provides is some limitation on someone's ability to come forward and ask for a, a use on appeal or a variance over and over again, okay? Y'all recall that y'all have recommended and put in place or asked council to put in place a, a limitation on rezoning request, you have to wait a year to do that. In this, in the section 37 that we've written, it sets up the boundaries for rehearing and basically limits that unless there's some extenuating circumstance that calls the board to, to want to do that, they have to have a hearing to decide whether they're going to rehear it, so. The short of it is all of this is lacking in your current code and needs some consideration. So, Mr. Chair, what I'm really asking for is some direction from this board as to how you would like to, to move forward with that, whether it's to, to move this to a committee or whether it's to put this forward for a public hearing at a, at a future meeting. As you recall, it's a change to the zoning ordinance, it requires a hearing and discussion and recommendation to the city council, city council can decide to do something with it or decide to do nothing with it, but it does have to start here with the planning commission.
All right, do you want to start off with a subcommittee and then, or just, what do you, what do you want us to do, Joel?
I think it would probably be helpful for a, a committee to, to understand it, to some report on it, and it is a staff recommendation, it may require some refinement before going forward.
Lloyd, would you chair that committee? All right, do you want to have a few other people? You go right ahead.
You guys are trying to get it.
All right, would you like to be a part of that? I know, I was going to let you do something, but, I'll, I'll stand there with you and, Ms. Carpenter, would you like to do, okay, the three of us will.
You can set up a meeting force.
Okay.
Yes sir, we will set that up.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Other than to take this opportunity to thank Councilman Whiteside for, and there may be others who wish to do the same, but you may not realize that, but.
He is.
Term, if, when his term ends, then he will have to come off the planning commission, but I enjoyed having you on the commission and enjoyed helping you learn a lot about development in the city, so.
Okay, yes sir. Mr. Mayor, would you like to speak too?
I would, thank you, yes, it's been a pleasure, honor to serve up here with you, you've been very dedicated to this body, to this city and whatever directions the good Lord has for you, you'll do well there and thank you and I consider you a friend and anything I can do, please reach out to me.
Special Whiteside, I too appreciate, appreciate you being on this board from the time you were there. John?
I would put you on.